All right. Good evening. I want to call to order the April twenty fifth, twenty twenty four Ventnor City Board of Commissioners meeting to order. Everyone, please rise for the flag flag salute. Thank you. Roll call Cindy.
Commissioner Kribel.
Hi.
Commissioner Mento.
Here.
Mayor Landgraf.
Here. Pursuant to the Open Public Meetings Act, adequate notice of this meeting has been provided. The agenda has been posted in City Hall and on the city's website at VentnorCity.org. We have a meeting announcement in our in our remote disclosure. I'm not going to read that in. But should we have issues with our remote status on on the Zoom meeting, we will continue with the meeting and just shut that remote access down. Uh, we have some presentations tonight. Our first one is the surprise of the night. For Christian. For Christian Bergman, we have a proclamation for you, Christian, um, for some of your accomplishments. So I'm going to read that into the record and then we'll 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 come up and congratulate you on that. City of Ventnor, Christian Bergman, whereas we are here today to express special recognition for Christian Bergman and to honor him. And whereas the beginning at a young age, while following in his pops footsteps, Christian could be found on the beach, spending countless hours supporting and encouraging Ventnor City lifeguards. And whereas at age fifteen, Christian moved to Cape Cod to attend Riverview School, where he excelled in leadership skills, serving as a class president and captain of the baseball, track and field teams. And whereas through countless hours, Christian found his passion for Special Olympics, becoming a fifteen time gold medalist powerlifter. And whereas Christian is a sports enthusiast, his love of sports makes him a book of knowledge for rooting for his favorite Philadelphia teams. Whereas Christian became a welcome sight with the Ventnor lifeguards and fire prevention department, where he offers assistance with day to day operations, offering positive encouragements to all those he encounters. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the mayor and Ventnor City Board of Commissioners do hereby congratulate and recognize Christian Bergman for his caring, sharing spirit, and his commitment to his family and community. Quick thank you guys all for coming. Happy birthday. He's part of Christmas life and he's part of our community and everybody knows it. So we thank everyone he does for everybody, including here. It looks like we surprised them at that. So that was great. Well done for keeping that quiet, guys. We have a proclamation for Arbor Day, which is tomorrow. I'm not going to read that whole one. I don't think we need to read that in till we, you know, I'll start it out. So in in eighteen seventy-two, the Nebraska Board of Agriculture established a special day set aside for planting planting of trees, and that was April twenty-sixth. So basically, it's it's observed around the world. Um, talks about trees being the solution for combating climate change, reducing erosion, precious topsoil, wind and water. You know, fuzz back. Cutting heating and cooling costs, moderating the temperature, cleaning air, and producing life giving oxygen. Uh, I now therefore I Lance Landgraf, Mayor of Ventnor City, do hereby proclaim April twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-four as Arbor Day in the city of Ventnor and I to all citizens to celebrate Arbor Day and support efforts to protect our trees and woodlands. Right? That one. And we have a third, um, presentation, the Lewis Bay Second Scholarship Competition. We have, um, a participation award, and we have our state semifinalists. We have Nahal Khan and Samantha Botino here. You are Samantha?
No.
You're Nahal. All right. You can stay down there. We'll come at you. So this is is a competition that is put on by, um, Lewis Bay Scholarship. They give scholarships to students who write an essay about. Tell us what you wrote about.
Um, but well, the park and stuff that are, you know, better leave for learning, they, that's my very part here.
Great. So it's a community impact essay that they ask they ask students to write. And we're going to be our state, uh, you can do the one around. So you get the, you know, took a good anticipation for that. Um, I got to read it. It was fantastic. So great job. Good luck to you. You want to be a writer? Okay, we all. Tina, again, she wrote something that meant well to her to our community, and we'll make sure she gets this and wish wish her luck in the state competition. Last but not least, we have, um, Drew Holmes and his students from ACIT. Um, I've got to see this presentation a couple of times now. Um, what they've done, and Drew tries to do this each year with different projects throughout the county. Uh, I reached out to him. We have a a vacant land piece of property here on Ventnor Avenue. And Drew looked at it as an opportunity for his his CAD students to do some design. So I'll turn it over to Drew Holmes, who's an instructor, landscape architect. I've known Drew and his family for quite some time. We're kind of in the same worlds together. So if you want to use the microphone right there behind you, Drew.
Can I try it without the mic?
You know, you guys hear me? Well, now you're standing in front of the mic. They can all hear you.
All right. So, uh, first, let me preface this and say I want to thank everybody for coming today. You know, this is an awesome opportunity for my kids, and, uh, they worked really, really hard on the presentation to back it up. I guess Mr. Landgraf came to me about three years ago, I'd say it was, and said he had an idea. He had a piece of land in downtown Ventnor, and we wound up having a field trip over to look at the site. These guys were freshmen. They're so, most of them are sophomores and juniors now. And they went out and looked at the site and, uh, we had actually at the time, I had another man named Bob Preston, who's a landscape architect. He was at the time a landscape architect for the city of Atlantic City, and he came out and we met on site. I believe, uh, Commissioner Kribel was there too, and Mr. Landgraf, and we started it there, and now we're going to talk about the site analysis, and I'm going to bring up Sincere. He's going to take the lead here. You ready, Sincere?
Yeah, let that let let me see it more. So, yeah. We know the lot. Yeah, we we know the lot.
All right. So pretty much it kind of just, um, started off. It is a thirty by a hundred and ten foot, um, lot. It's quite lengthy. It is in between a restaurant called Shalom Pita and like two doctor's offices. It's right on, um, Ventnor Avenue, and it's like right across from, I think, Supo Re and stuff like that. Um, on the far end side, on like the right side where Shalom Pita is, right behind there, you have two homes behind it. All the way in the back of the home, you have another, um, home behind the site. Um, the sun kind of comes in with, um, the site. The sun is going to come in from right over here, and then it's going to travel its path around here and then back around here, sending rays into this. And your best views are probably going to be around midday, and pretty much a lot of people decided to design their parks focusing on those, um, views. That's pretty much it.
Wow.
Nice.
The the cool thing about all the stuff that they have in there, a lot of the stuff in there is all three D printed. So Drew teaches them through AutoCAD, and then they have a three D printer to to bring all these things to to three dimensional.
Right.
It's pretty cool. Want to play any of this video? Sure. Jim, can you play the video? So we have two screens on either side.
Let's see if you can get this.
There you go.
So you want to see it?
We're getting this. So you, uh, this was made in. This video was made in Twin Motion, which is a, uh, system we use. It's based off of Revit. Um, so I took my park. I designed it into Revit and then took it and put it in the Twin Motion. Um, from that, I turned it into a three D rendering and then took pictures to and put them together to create a video and make a kind of like a mini walkthrough of the actual park itself.
It's really nice.
Yeah.
So my park, the biggest thing with it is I want to design aspects of Ventnor into it, so different things that represent it. So in the front here with the gate has the, um, boat, and then we have the, uh, small kind of rowboat, um, come with like the Ocean City Boat, the Ventnor Boat, stuff like that. We have the, um, lifeguard tower on the front end of the gate. All of these also are cut out to have holes in them. So they don't seem like just a straight metal gate. Um, and they have some character to them as well. On the entire side of it, on this wall and the back wall is that repeated all the way down to make it feel a bit more interesting in there. We also have a mural on the back side of it that says Ventnor City, New Jersey with that boat on the side. Um, when you enter, the concrete is, uh, colored concrete is also weather resistant and resistant to the ocean salt, so that a way it will not decay over time. The, um, tree planters, those little circles right there, um, they also work as seating too, so they're not just for the trees. They're multipurpose as well as these semi-circles right here. They are also seating area. This small area right here is for the Shalom Pita Restaurant. Um, is takeout window. So if someone wants to go in there and get some food and um, and then in the back of it is more of an open space. So if someone wants to put, um, seating back there or just it's more of just a recreational space, whatever someone wants to do with it, as well as there are two benches on the back side of it. And we have, um, bushes and plants that go around the side, um, integrated into the park.
That's really great. Can you open that door? Push that door open. Kind of. I want to make it think we're in a closed meeting.
I will back up and tell you, when we started the design process, I had, we had, uh, somebody from Stockton come out and do a thing called diversity design, where the kids had to think about somebody else. Rylan kind of took the lead on it. Won't explain why.
Good evening. My name's Rylan. This is Nick. This is our diversity park that we decided to put in the Ventnor area. The, what he's talking about with Stockton, it turns out he had a professor come in to talk about diversity and give us all the types of tips, ideas, stuff that we can do. And it turns out that it was my fifth grade math teacher. So she came out. I was like, whoa, I didn't know you were a Stockton teacher now. So she came up and we designed diversity stuff where we have electronic signs to show quotes, songs, news, stuff like that for deaf people. Because I take ASL, so she was telling us all this stuff. So we did research and we chose metal slides because it reduces static electricity for hearing aids. The Ray Sandbox, me personally, I have an autistic brother. So when we were growing up, we did sandbox stuff or stuff like that because it calms them down or it just helps them relax. And that's what we did. I'm going to let Nick come over. He's going to explain the how we got the design of the park.
Good afternoon, everyone. Uh, my name is Nicholas. I was responsible for the layout. Uh, round over here, we have circle uh, type of layout. I chose that design for more room and for like I said, make it more spacious for those who have a disability like wheelchair can roam around with ease. Around here is going to be a a drive through, so people can dine there and order food from the Shalom Restaurant right there. Further down, we have a, uh, sunflower sculpture where there kids can also climb on the sculpture that we have also designed. In the middle, we have a nice common area where you can just sit, relax. And then at the end, we have a play zone for the kids. We made it rubberized just in case if anything happens, like they fall, it won't be seriously damaged. The, that's it.
All right.
Thank you.
What he's talking about with the round design, how we kept everything, each one of these circles is going to have their own seat and table. So if you're coming in from work or you need to sit down, relax, you have the window there, you can get some food. And you have your own individual workspace where you can sit down and have your own thing. Everything's different colors. We kept it a sunflower theme because who doesn't like sunflowers? They're very, very flower. You want to go look at, keeps it attractive. You want to come in. So we did colored concrete where every color we kept it either dark or light because when the sun hits it, it will attract heat. So you don't want to burn yourself. So we kept it yellow, red, blue. We kept the blue in the back. This, uh, that rubberized matte stuff. So when the kids are playing on it, they fall, it's not crazy hot. You can go out there with no shoes, and then you got the colored concrete, so it's still somewhat cool in there. We have, because of the different hours where the sun come in, you have shade in different areas. So we kept the circles where you can sit, and there's always going to be shade in that spot. We kept everything in low profile for, um, deaf people where you have the low profile, profile benches, you can sign. So you can be on this side of the park and sign on the other because you have the low profile and nobody can block anything. We have, um, there's trees and all that stuff to keep it. There's no water, so it's not going to be very high maintenance. There's just turf where you have to mow it every once in a while, and you have the trees and everything looks nice. It doesn't have to be maintained as much. And, uh, yeah, that about covers it. Thank you.
So, um, this is our park. It's a pretty cool park. Uh, the gate here, the, uh,
It's at the screen. Oh, I'm sorry.
So, um, this park, we, for the gate, we had, you know, me and my friend Jaden, we worked together with this one. I made the design and he made the little design on it, you know. And, um, like inside, just like, you know, a lot of area to move around and whatnot, you know, nice place. Um, if you look over here on this wall right here, it's like, um, exercise stuff, you know, like little bikes and stuff for, you know, exercise. Yeah. And on the wall, like on the side, there's a mural made by Jaden. It's really nice.
His concept behind the mural was he was like the old, who's so basically, he he basically designed that. This is Jaden. You want to talk about the sensory area? There's another area with sensory.
Yeah, there's a little sensory area here for people who, you know, need sensory stuff. It's a nice area. I like it.
Excellent job.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Davis.
My name's Andre.
And for our park, we decided to do an arc entryway that he designed.
So yes, as you can see, you have arcs going down this path right here. And over here, you have a little seating area in case you want to, you know, sit down, eat your lunch, or just hang out there. Over here, we have an open fire pit trellis, and as you can see on the edges here, we have seating. And, uh,
The the walkway here is stamped concrete, so the, um, if we were to do wood, it would be damaged by the, um, the beach weather. And here, all of this is turf. And right here, we have double decker benches surrounding the fire pit in the middle. We have like sort of like an open trellis so that it it can't catch on fire from the fire pit in the middle. We just wanted that to be just its own subject. As you go down the pathway, at the back of the park, there's a stage and, um, little bleachers here. And the sun's coming in from north here, so there's a nice little backdrop behind the stage, especially when it's, um, sunset and sundown. And we did a lot of trees on the side and all around the park just for extra greenery. And yeah, that's really it.
So the students really, they really put their heart and souls into these designs. I was in the classroom a couple of times with with Drew, and I think you made you made it out there. You were out at the site. I don't think you made it in the classroom. But, you know. Right. This this gives us a good idea of what you guys have done with it. Um, it's really appreciated to us to see the designs. It gives us ideas, whether or not we we build one of them or take a piece from each one of them. It's just ideas we're looking at. Um, and not only for this park. These are some of the idea, the sensory stuff that I think the first or second, the first group did. The second group did. I think that's something we could add to parks that we have now. Um, you know, our our playgrounds and things for kids that don't have something to do, that have those those prefab, you know, playground apparatus. You know, something for the the hearing impaired was is something never even thought about. So great job, guys. Really appreciate it. And you got a competition coming up next week, so good luck on that. Have fun with it. That's the big part of it. Have fun. And like I told you in your classrooms, get used to speaking in public because that's going to be, if you're going to get into designs. Commissioner Kribel and I do this for a living. Maria, not so much, but she was still runs meetings and things. So get used to speaking in public. Because if you want to go somewhere, you you have to be able to do that. Job interviews and whatever, you have to be able to talk in front of people. So I encourage you to do that as much as you can. But great job tonight. Really appreciate it. We're gonna, we're gonna take a little, little break. We're gonna come over and look at the things so these guys can see more of it close up than than I already have. And then we have to go into executive session to do something real quick. We got five minutes. We'll take a walk around. We take a five minute recess. Thank you.
I helped design the main, um, concept of the park. I wanted to have a flowing, natural, like curvature as it's next to the ocean, and you think of ocean waves, that kind of stuff. So the, starting off with the fence, I have a design that is basically mimics the ocean, but, um, there's the blue and beachy kind of like split color, which Ventnor, close to the ocean. Um, and the sidewalk is concrete, so it won't wither away and like get destroyed. Uh, it's also a eight foot width, so people with wheelchairs and like walkers, um, even strollers can comfortably move through. Uh, and we have a takeout window for Shalom Pita, so people can sit down, relax, enjoy food. And, uh, um, we also have the stage in the back, which was my central idea to maybe do live performances. Maybe you can rent out the park for maybe special, um, occasions to bring the community together and just make everyone more social because social media, media is a problem, and people just need to get out more.
So another, um, one of our main kind of concepts with the design is pretty much, um, butterflies like underwater. We chose butterflies because, um, when you think of a butterfly, you think of like flowing, being free, being open, um, new beginnings and stuff like that when they come from a caterpillar to a butterfly. Um, our entrance way has, um, these good waves and these, um, birds that connect into a letter V, which, um, is represent, uh, representative of Ventnor. Around this, we have our seating wall right here. And this is just going to allow, so once you walk in, you don't want to have to hustle too much to really get down to a seat. Um, because of the type of area it's in, we kind of just wanted it to be a really calm recreational area. So we have seating walls all around. And all of these little dangly, um, butterflies that you see in the trees and stuff like that, they're, they would be made out of a specific type of wiring which would, um, give light luminosity in, um, the nighttime and really give you a really great overall vibe. We have a campfire right here, which is covered by this really big tree. So when the sun's coming in, you have like a really nice shade, and it's also going to be really, really good for the nighttime. Um, we have a mural over here on the side. This is mainly just showcasing again our butterflies, and because we're right next to the ocean, we decided to put them in bubbles and throw them underwater. And yeah, that's pretty much it. It's just a nice nature, environmental part.
Yeah, thank you all guys. Great job. Really appreciate you coming in. Thanks a lot. Next semester.
Nah, they need it for.
Okay, that's what I'm, that's the next project. Okay.
Yeah, they're all ready to go in their little micro houses.
Oh, yeah? I'll come in. Yeah. All right, we're back on, right?
Yes.
We're good. All right. Um, we'll go through a couple of things. We're, we, um, do not have any department head reports, and I don't believe we have any capital discussion, discussion. We don't have any minutes to approve tonight. We are going to have to go into executive session for a few minutes. So once these guys clear out, we will do that. Um, I'll read the announcement now. We can just wait till everybody clears out to do that. All right. Do a motion first. Need a motion to go into executive session?
Motion to enter executive session.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
New Jersey Open Public Meetings Act permits discussion of certain matters within executive session as an exception to certain provisions of said law. Ventnor City Board of Commissioners wishes to discuss certain matters which qualify as exceptions in executive session. No action binding upon the Board of Commissioners will be taken within executive session, and the discussion conducted in closed session will be disclosed to the public when legally permitted and when the public interest no longer served to be by keeping such matters confidential. Matters to be discussed are matters relating to a time attorney client privilege and possible litigation.
Motion to come out of the executive session.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. You back on? Jim, you can let people back in? We're good. Okay. So Nicole, you wanted to give a brief?
Sure. So while we were in executive session, we discussed two pending litigation matters and a third matter which, um, involves a, uh, an individual employed by the municipality and the actions that, um, we will be looking to weigh moving forward. And at this time, that's really all we can say.
Okay. All right. We're going to go back into our workshop portion of our agenda, and where we left off was we have no minutes to approve from last month. We'll do them, uh, at our next meeting. And then we we have, uh, two ordinance introductions. The first is twenty twenty-four dash zero one two bond ordinance providing repair and or rehabilitation of the boardwalk, buying in the city of of Ventnor City, County of Atlantic, appropriating fourteen million one hundred and ten thousand six hundred and eighty-nine dollars, therefore including a seven point one roughly seven million one hundred and ten thousand six hundred and eighty-nine dollar grant from the state of New Jersey for Boardwalk Preservation Fund. Authorizing the issue of seven million dollars in bonds or notes, the finance, uh, part thereof. What basically that does is the money we got from the state got us to, from Jackson Avenue to about Surrey.
Right.
Um, what we would have liked that to cover the whole thing. We asked for twenty-five million. Um, we'd like to at least get to the pier with those renovations. So this would hopefully get us that with our estimates. So, um, that's what this does. We don't have to spend that extra seven million that we're putting in bond, but we're we're preparing to be able to to do that. Okay? All right. Um, the second one is on introduction is twenty twenty-four dash zero one three, providing various twenty twenty-four general capital improvements buying in the city of Ventnor, appropriating three million dollars, therefore authorizing the issuance of two million eight hundred fifty-seven thousand one hundred and forty-two dollars in bond notes, bonds or notes, the finance part of the cost thereof. Those items deal Those items deal with uh police IT improvements, uh public works, vehicles, utility improvements, recreation. For our playgrounds, um fire department, safety equipment, PCBP boats and sheds. Uh bulkhead restoration, street ends, drainage projects and beach replenishment. It's a million dollars set aside for beach replenishment, which if you've been on the beach recently, you've seen where we need that.
Right.
Um Buffalo Avenue has almost zero beach at high tide.
Hmm.
Um. Side note on that, we may have to discuss limiting the ability to put up canopies like Wildwood there just for because of that.
Square footage.
Yeah. We'll we'll talk about that prior to our next meeting. Um you're good with those?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Now, can I just highlight two of those things that you mentioned?
Sure.
So that there's a couple of things on here of interest to people. The public works infrastructure provides money to redo the tennis courts and pickleball courts in the past.
Did have that on here and I.
That was a that was a commitment that was made previously. This will provide the funds to be able to go forward.
Yep.
In the short term, we are doing uh emergency or short term repairs to pickleball courts uh and tennis courts for. This season, then we'll see how that holds up. We can go ahead and reconstruct the basketball court because that's completely out of play now. So. Once this is in place, we can move forward with those projects. Um and then, as you already mentioned, the beach fill. So two thirds of this ordinance are for the beach fill project.
Right.
For those recreation improvements.
Right. I did have pickleball down here. My cryptic note says P-ball and I couldn't read what that was that said. So thank you for filling that in.
That's helpful.
Um. We will go into ordinance, public hearing and adoption on three ordinances, the first being twenty twenty four dash zero zero nine. And that's chapter two twenty, the code of city of Venter. Same relates to water usage. We talked about that at our last meeting. That's an increase on on water um base fee of seventy five dollars.
Right.
And then ordinance twenty twenty four dash zero one zero. Chapter one eighty six, very similar for sewer usage, again, a seventy five dollar uh increase in in that base fee. Good with both of those. Um. And ordinance twenty twenty four dash zero one one, which is bond ordinance providing various capital improvements, excuse me. An acquisition of various equipment for the city schools. This is the HVAC project for uh VECC and that's a nine hundred thousand dollar. Um bond ordinance. Again, this goes back to our first year in office.
Yeah.
Uh instead of the school putting that in their their budget, they cannot bond. So we do that and it saves us a significant amount of dollars in doing it that way.
This would have been in one year's budget.
Yeah, that would have been a three to five cent. Tax increase.
Yeah.
So by doing this, it spreads it over one multiple years, but also multiple residents. And not just the people that have kids in the school now or live here now.
Right.
Spreads it over years of time and it's.
Twenty year, wouldn't you think?
It is, yeah.
Yeah, twenty year improvement.
I would hope.
Fifteen year, yep.
So those are the ordinances, most introduction and adoption that we're proposing. Then we'll go into resolutions. We'll adopt those by consent. Uh resolution twenty twenty four dash one twenty three, and we're going to add one uh additional one. So we'll go to one thirty six here on the bench. So the first one is resolution one twenty three. And it's for authorizing seasonal part time employment for the city of Venter, Department of Public Works. We're going to hire five seasonal employees. Most of these guys are coming back from years in the past. Get Joe Calvi, Mike Vitanza, Mike Miltonberger, um Ryan Gao, I'm going to pronounce that correctly, and Robert Newcomer. So those will be the five guys we're going to look to bring in back into our public works. Good on that one.
Yep.
And then resolution one twenty four is authorizing change order number two for water main replacement roadway reconstruction, Monmouth Avenue, Lafayette Avenue. It's approximately a hundred thousand dollar increase. What we added there was um construction of of road base or removal of concrete road base. On Monmouth Avenue, they ran into a layer of concrete that had to be removed. And then we added the entire sewer line for Harvard Avenue. Recall, we had when we went to tie into those lines, they were just disintegrating and causing a lot of problems. So we had to add that entire street of Harvard. From Monmouth to Winchester. So. You dig up old things, they tend to break. Resolution one twenty five is a authorizing refund of uh one thousand nine hundred and eighty three dollars and forty cents. For water discharge to Calmar Associates, not Calmar, Calmar Associates. There was an overpayment on that. Uh one twenty six is awarding Arthur Chu for the construction management inspection of services Winchester Avenue Bulkhead, not to exceed twenty six thousand four hundred dollars. Um Arthur was or Art Chu was a design engineer on that. So he's hired them to do the inspections on it when they're building it. And that project should start sometime in the next three to four months, we think, Tom, fall?
I think so.
Winchester between which streets?
It's at the Jackson Avenue.
Jackson.
It's at the end there. Um I don't know where it stops. I don't know the end there, but it's all the way up.
The hillside.
Yeah, right there at Hillside.
Yeah.
The Crab House.
Right, Crab House.
Um rowers know what we're talking about. Resolution one twenty seven is authorizing no parking during the farmer's market, um certain streets in and around there. Um. So we do that every year.
Mm hmm.
That's coming up. Newport Avenue, yep. Resolution one twenty eight is authorizing no parking suspension of open container during certain special events. Those are our concerts, uh Newport Avenue and Ski Beach. One twenty nine is purchasing agent for finalized specification and public publicly bid, I can say that, publicly bid Venter City Banshell. That is why our agenda is so thick.
Right.
For our our backup documents, that's half of it. Um that's going out soon, so that'll be ready for construction in the fall.
Right. So those are the con the contract bidding documents.
Yep.
That'll be advertised next week, taking bids middle of May, uh looking to start construction day after Labor Day.
Day after Labor Day.
Yeah.
Yeah, we had a Zoom meeting with the architect and laid out our schedule, laid out the a couple tweaks that they weren't happy to hear about for the design, but I think they're. They make sense. We wanted to rate, if I can just talk about it.
Yeah, sure.
Second, they we 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 recognize that the design was a little too low for that space, so we're raising that. Platform, so it's the same height as the existing platform. It's going to require maybe a switchback.
Yeah.
Um.
Yeah.
Yeah, so I think it's a it was a smart. Smart thing to do to um just to keep it so that because those concerts go all the way back.
You'll be able to see it.
Be able to see it.
Yeah.
So we're trying to keep it um.
Agreed. Yeah, that changes the elevation of the ramps and all that stuff.
Yeah.
Okay. Um if you haven't noticed, as part of that same thing, both the old gazebo and the lifeguard tent is gone are gone.
Right.
They were moved over the last week, ten days. So actually this week, that that site is now ready for that. Um resolution one thirty is authorizing first one first one of of two year extension to Brothers Enterprises LLC. For food and beverage concessionaire on the pier. That's the pier shack. Um so Tom was able to negotiate a little bit more money on this lease. I think it's thirty five hundred dollars per year. Plus five hundred dollars per cart. I think they had one, maybe two carts last year.
True, they made.
We made a third one this year.
So it's the same vendor?
Yeah.
Same vendor, yeah.
It's uh.
Yeah, when when you ordered the contract last year, it had options for us to renew for two successive one year terms.
Right.
So we can renew this year. You can do it again next year, rebid it the following year.
Yep. Great. Um you good Maria with that?
Yep.
Yep. Um resolution one thirty one is authorizing hiring of seasonal part time employees for Venter City Police Department. Um it's like we got four of these guys. Some of them are are they new? Um some are new, some are returning. Gao, I think, is returning. We had, we tried to get eight. We because I I I've been talking to the the rank and file police and then the the chief as well about trying to have. The quality of life issues like at uh parking and at Wawa and at and on the boardwalk, we're only able to to have candidates that are. The the type of quality that we ask for, we were only able to find uh that not 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 as much um applied, but we have we have. We'll have we hiring four. We have one full time. Bella.
Bella Bella.
Yeah.
And then we're gonna try. She's already working um boardwalk on weekends as the season gets in and we're trying to work a little closer with them to get them more hours. Um and um and we talked about this ourselves about maybe hiring another full time park, just for park.
Gotcha. All right. Resolution one thirty two is refunding pasta dinner fees to Joan Brannigan. She was unable to attend when we had to relocate that date, change the date to the rain date, flood date it should have been called. And almost flooded that day too.
Yeah.
Um resolution one thirty three, authorizing the mayor to execute an agreement with the city of Venter and Trinity Code Inspecting LLC as plumbing and fire protection subcode officials. Mechanical inspector and building inspector. Um with uh some changes in our code office. Um we are going to go to a third party inspector. Um it's someone who's worked for the city before. Gentlemen, my name is Jake Dilworth, owns this Trinity company, um and they will be our inspectors. Um it's efficient for us. Will not cost us any more money than what we have. We're actually gonna. Had some, we'll have to add some administrative fees to manage that. Um we've we've talked that through with Dino and his staff and it's going to be kind of a real smooth transition. Um we'll actually be, we'll save some money on some vehicles too, so.
So plumbing and fire, but not electric or mechanical as well?
Mechanical as well, mechanical inspector and.
Electric, no, we have.
We have we have an electric guy.
Yeah, we have an electric guy. Should just be mechanical and building inspector.
Right, so.
All right, good with that?
Mm hmm.
Right. Uh resolution one thirty four is requesting approval of special items of revenue and appropriation. Looks like we've got recycling tonnage grant back from ACUA, the amount of twelve thousand eight hundred and twenty three dollars. Can't recuse yourself on that.
Probably, yeah, could thank you for reminding me.
It's always good to get money in. Uh resolution one thirty five is terminating a contract with IPS Group and authorizing removal of cash payment parking meters. So that's the one. That we're gonna move to Park Mobile.
Right, I see the members of the VBA is here. Maybe we uh there's a comment portion at the end here coming up in a couple.
Two minutes.
Two minutes?
Yeah.
If you want to talk about what you your your group has uh has discussed on that matter, um that will be the time.
Yep. Um next, we'll have approval of bills and payroll and then I don't have any discussion items. Did anybody have any? I don't have any. So less than two minutes. So we'll have at this point, we'll have public comment on any items on our agenda. If you have any comments.
Did there was.
Oh, thirty six. I'm sorry, I do have that too. It's right here. Sorry. When they're added on the bench, they're not on my list. So it messes me up. So resolution one thirty six is authorizing person to person and place to place transfer of plenary retail distribution license. Number zero one two two dash forty four dash zero zero nine dash zero zero five from Basia's Inc. to Michael DePilla Inc. That's a um package goods license.
Yeah.
That's on Atlantic Avenue. Is it staying in that same location? Forty eight twenty five Atlantic.
Um. Yeah, formerly.
Yes, that's where it is. Yep, it is. All right, so that's the last one. Um all right, so we're going to open up the public on for public comment. Any one who has any comments, please step forward to the microphone, state your name and ask your questions or make your comment.
Thank you.
Guess that's Michael Philip.
I guess so.
Did everything just waited for that?
Yeah, I guess.
Hello?
Brenda Dowd, one twenty five South Little Rock Road Avenue. For on behalf of the VBA in regards to the parking meters and Park Mobile. So as you know, thank you for the heads up, Tim. We did a survey amongst our members. Um there is substantial concern about the removal of the parking meters and going to a hundred percent. App in front of the business. Um. You will have to make substantial changes to your signage if you remove the physical. Meters. So right now, in a parking block of a the city businesses, there's one sign per block. If you are at either end of that sign, you won't see it.
Right.
So the only way to be successful with the app is to increase signage. It's on the same as your street sweeping. If you have a sign at the top of the street and at the bottom of the street, you turn on, you're not looking for a sign. You park mid-block, you don't know it's street sweeping day and you wake up to a ticket. You have to, you'll have to do more signage for to be effective for you for the city not to lose money. Right now. People pull up, they see a meter. They'll drop money in the meter. You are collecting money. Because they're just dropping the money in the meter. If you don't have the meter there and they don't see the sign, you're losing. That money.
Unless they get a ticket.
So.
So, okay. You have three parking enforcement officers right now.
Right.
Two on any given day. Your class ones last year were relegated to the boardwalk only. So that was no help. North Beach is its own problem with parking because of the permits and you've got angry citizens down there because you don't enforce the permits. You're going to have angry business owners if you don't enforce Park Mobile.
It'll be enforced. We understand we have to install new signs. One of the signs that I actually saw down in Stone Harbor, what they added was because we do the the grace period and the holidays. They actually had that and they leave it up.
Yes, they do.
Right.
Yes, they do.
We're going to add those. I have Rick already starting to to get those ready to to put up.
We're also looking into har into painting the more particular locations for parking, which would identify that there is a parking spot there. In some cases, you may lose some places, but your point.
It's going to make you popular, Tim.
Yeah. It I'm not.
I know.
I don't have a magic wand, but the the and as far as losing money, the it's actually costing us money.
I understand your math, but I'm telling you from a just observational, every day, people are putting money in broken meters.
Yeah, but the math doesn't end up, it doesn't add up.
I'm not I'm not defending the, I'm not defending the meters. You guys have made your decision. I don't agree with it, but I don't have to agree with it. You've made your decision. I'm just telling you if for Park Mobile to be effective.
Right.
You're going to have to increase your signage.
Under percent.
And one hundred percent across the board. Members of the VBA do not want you to extend the parking limit. Because for those of us and almost all. In your email, you just you you mentioned, and I don't have your email in front of me, you mentioned that. The limited hours on the parking or what whatever you phrased it, it made it sound like you were looking to extend it.
No, to be clear.
Than two hours.
That to be clear, when we first started with Park Mobile, and that's why we feel a little more comfortable because we've we've been using it for a while. Is that the first time it was what when we started it, it wasn't wired to um to limit. The time on streets and that's the whole point of it. So now you're not going to be able to, you're not going to be able to simply add time at certain business districts. And the the also, so. So part of it is is also, I don't I want to circle back to the to the money piece. The 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 cost of the meters goes up and up and up and they take less and less and less to the tune of a hundred and forty thousand dollars from Park Mobile. To twenty thousand dollars in meters right now. So the not the dollars, while they're not going to balance the budget, it just doesn't make sense to future in the future to to buy something that is. Is obsolete in a way, right? So so and the other part of Park Mobile is that they will furnish all the signage. We can work with them on it. But they furnish they furnish the sign.
Right. Um.
Because it's in their best interest. And it also gives us data. So when we can see where the people are parking, then we can we can push our enforcement in those areas.
I'm I'm looking at Amy's numbers. Um. We got a hundred and fifty two thousand. From Park Mobile meters and we got thirty thousand from cash.
Yeah, and it costs us somewhere between two to ten thousand dollars in maintenance.
Right.
On mobile, on park, a parking meter.
Going to argue with you over the meters, not even going to touch it. I'm just telling you that. The the meters allow customers a ten minute grace period or a five minute grace period. They push that little green button.
Yeah.
What's Park Mobile going to do for us?
Probably won't.
Exactly.
Can't, which we asked.
We've asked them to do that.
So you just have the misfortune that Jimmy, Lenny or Bella are driving by and you don't have a five minute grace period.
Or you pay the twenty cents if you're only going to go in for five.
Park Mobile doesn't work that way. It doesn't. It's not a twenty cent twenty. Cent charge.
I've done fifteen.
You can do it fifteen minutes.
I've done fifteen minutes.
Yeah.
Uh one, I forget what app it was on, but I've I think I have three different ones on my phone. There's Park Mobile, there's Car Park.
Yeah.
Yeah, you can do. And unfortunately, that's not something that it 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 allows, but. You know, we're.
Let's be honest, Lenny, Bella and Jimmy are not going to be hovering around the corner.
Hmm no, that's why part of this discussion is to add a a full time. In in the hours seasonally, which would ultimately pay for himself or herself as well.
Is there so? Right now, it's a two hour limit. On the Park Mobile for Venter. right now, it's a two-hour limit on the Park Mobile for Ventnor.
What areas?
I think the beach parking lots are longer.
Maybe, so in, in my zone, it's a two-hour.
Right, round the theater, it's four, and yours.
But I can re-up that as many times as I want.
No, no.
I can.
Not anymore, you won't be able to.
Since when?
Since when we're making this ordinance.
Okay, that's perfect, because Chief Fussner told me last year that they had.
You could not.
And, and I had to park there one day, and I could just keep renewing it and renew it and renew it.
Yeah.
So as long as that protects the businesses, that's all we have.
He's assured me that that's the case. Park Mobile wasn't able to do that in the past, now they can limit it, they can cap it. By, by your license plate, cause you have, your license plate is tied to who you're paying for, so if you.
Right.
So you, so it, it is a hard, it is a hard stop that you can't re-up in certain zones when we wire it that way.
So let me ask you, because I've seen Bella and I've seen Lenny out there with their tablet to check the license plate to see if they've paid. You know, you following me? What is the actual procedure? So if I have a car, I pull in to work seven o'clock in the morning, and there's a car parked there. The car is still parked there at eleven o'clock. The car is still parked there at one o'clock. In the past, if Lenny's working, I can text him and say, can you just check? He comes out, and he has to punch in that license plate to see if they've paid at that zone. Is that, is that the procedure for, for parking enforcement? They have to literally punch in every license plate?
You'll, I'll have to have you talk to Fussner about the exact procedure, but the, from my understanding, the Park Mobile has a uh, you, has a, has an interface just for the parking.
Right.
For the parking attendants, which they'll be able to, they'll be able to see who's parking where and when. So they'll know when, so.
Alright, so let me, this. Okay, so.
But it's a, it's a, it's a resource question. So they do have a route that they do, they, certain days, they follow the street sweeper, and then we have them go into, um, uh, the, the, um, North Beach area to follow the meter, the, the, the parking permits for four hours and back at four hours. So they do have a route that they take, but, um, as far as the actual like day-to-day, um, they all have different schedules. So I can get back and, I can have, I can send you an email with it.
So just stay with me for a second. So when you have a parking meter and your parking meter expires, it currently flashes. So driving by, code enforcement can say, oh, gotta pause, I gotta stop, write a ticket, that parking meter's expired, right?
Right.
Well, yeah.
That's how it works.
Yeah.
Park Mobile sends out a notification when, when someone's time expires.
Thank you. So, alright, I have six parking spots in front of my store. Whoever's working, parking enforcement gets an alert. Do they get an alert that?
That's my understanding. Explain to me. They get, they get an alert at that certain location, a certain license plate, their time has expired. That's how I understand it.
We'll, we'll, we'll get back to you with the exact, but that is what we've been, that's the way we've understood it.
Because, the reason I ask, and I'm sorry if anybody's waiting their turn, because it's very labor-intensive watching parking enforcement punch in license plates to see.
They don't have to punch in a license plate.
I've seen them. So maybe, maybe.
Maybe they just verify.
Or is updated.
They might be punching it in to, to give them a ticket.
What do you think is labor-intensive about that? I mean, that's their, they're, they're issuing an e-ticket, yeah. They're.
No, it was before that. They're just trying to see if they were, so.
The meters are much more labor-intensive to the city. Ten times, ten times much more labor-intensive. The batteries don't last as long as they're supposed to.
Well.
Meters don't last long in our environment, so there's.
They were also used when you installed them, so that's, you know.
Were they used? I don't think they were used, right, Maria? You were.
What was that?
Well, she said they were used when we installed them?
No, we, we bought all new meters.
We, we have all new heads.
Bought all new head. The only thing that was there was the pole.
Yeah, but I mean, that's kind of beyond us now, right?
Right.
And none of that, and, and actually, they paid for themselves within.
They paid for themselves in the first year, but one more than was their two Gs, and two G went away.
Right, and that's part of this obsolescence.
Trade-in for five Gs.
What's the next thing? And then we have to send an armed. Well, just to respond, if, I don't, I don't, I guess I don't understand what you're saying is labor-intensive and why about Park Mobile, because it is, it is like apples and oranges. We have to send.
You've made your decision, and.
Will be.
I, I thank you for your time.
Because.
I thank you for.
If I were, if, if, if this was a, if, if Ventor was a business and I was a stockholder, I wouldn't want them to waste money and time and effort on something that wasn't gonna be productive or cost us money. So I, I, I'm, I'm here to, to listen. You said, I'm, I'm trying to understand what you think is labor-intensive about Park Mobile.
The way it was, but you, you, you've clarified it. I'm, I'm, I'm in the wrong, but you've addressed my questions.
Okay. Alright, anybody else?
Okay.
John Dowd, one twenty-five South Little Rock. Um, I just wanted to thank you for the parking for the farmer's market again, and renewing that again for this year. I appreciate that. I will talk Park Mobile real quick, if that's okay. It's about mon.
Sure.
It's all about monitoring, and how do you make sure that somebody's driving by and making sure that they're not parked there? And it's expired. So I guess that's the whole thing, is how do you monitor that?
What Mr. Mr. Crevel, him, Mr. Commissioner Crevel, this guy, um, brought to us tonight is that he would like to hire for the summer season a fourth.
Yeah.
Parking meter, how do they call it, meter maid, cause that's.
It's not a popular job.
No, I, I understand that, but you gotta be able to monitor.
It's not like, uh, you know.
Like you're done doing taxes.
It's terrible. You're, you're telling somebody they gotta owe them money, but I guess the question would be.
Pitch that to some.
But it's gotta be monitored.
Yeah.
It's never gonna work. It's like anything else. If you don't monitor it, then people are just gonna park there.
Exactly.
I mean, that's just the way it is.
And then, and then, but, but in this case, we have, um, we have five seasonal seasonal people coming on. They're not gonna be completely dedicated to the boardwalk. They'll, they will have some certain shifts. Some of them come on later in the afternoon when these, these times are important, but we, I, I think we have a need to have them on, on week, on the Friday, Saturday, Sundays.
Absolutely.
And I think that we're gonna, we already started the advertisement for someone be, uh, because I, we've had one, but we haven't gotten any responses. So, you know, we've, we've advertised it, uh, last year and the year, and the year before, and no one.
Yeah, it's like the Tyree mode.
Yeah, so is there, is there a way of then, if the business owner sees that somebody's parked there, but nobody's done anything, is there a, a place for them to call? Is there a number? So you want them to call the emerg, non-emergency line? And get a hold of the police and say, hey, you need to send somebody out here? Is that how you wanna handle it going forward?
Yeah, so most, most times when a police officer see, is not writing parking tickets because they're, there's just a, a, not the right resource for that, especially when you have a city like ours, which is very active, you have about a call in the summertime every half hour. So, so what they do when they write tickets is when they see something egregious, like someone parking in a fifty, twenty-foot zone, or somebody in a park, in a driveway. That's when they stop and write a ticket. But we, you can call the, the non-emergency line, and they put it in a triage queue and say, if there's somebody, if there's not a, a more serious event happening, they will send a, a, an armed officer there.
The business owners will know, then we'll let them know that they can just call the non-emergency if they're finding somebody egregious and nothing's happening.
It goes right to dispatch. And the, and then, nine times out of ten, that dispatch goes directly to one of the, one of our specials, so the specials would pick that up, and if they weren't available because there's something going on, they would send a car. But, um, but we're gonna, we're gonna work with the ACUA and our public, our public, our, our outreach there to get more, to get more graphics out, to get more information out, to get more signage out, things of that.
And are they gonna be able to get more than one ticket? So let's say they park there, and they don't care about the ticket, and it just sits there all day cause it's only, what, forty, fifty bucks, and they figure, I'm only gonna spend forty bucks for the day to park anyway to go to the beach. Is there a way of giving another ticket, or another ticket, or a third ticket, or anything like that, or escalating fees? Have you thought about anything like that?
Look at the boot.
We've seen people do that. I mean, we know as well as you probably do, that people will park there, go to the beach.
Well.
And then not care if they got one ticket. They're like, eh, forty bucks for parking for the day.
Yeah, well. Philadelphia's fifty dollars, and so is a ticket, so use your poison.
I'm not in Philly here, and I'm asking, is, is, is it something that you're planning on escalating, giving multiple tickets? If they're there for an extended period of time, or you, one ticket, and that's it, and if they see the second ticket, then they don't care.
No, that's a good point.
Cause they, it, it happens, as you know.
It does.
Alright, thank you.
Jim, can you check online if there's anybody on Zoom that wants to have any comments? Farmer's market, so we got tied up in the Park Mobile, but.
Yeah, thank you. We can't wait.
Agreed, agreed. Jim, anybody on Zoom?
Anybody on Zoom wishes to speak or comment on any of the items?
Alright.
No.
Alright, seeing none, we'll close the public portion on Zoom. Anybody left in the audience wants to comment? Peter? Nothing? Alright, good to have you.
I have my Oreos in the freezer, Peter.
So we'll close the public portion, and we'll also close our workshop and a motion to go into our regular, regular meeting.
Motion to close workshop and enter a regular meeting session.
Thanks for coming out, guys. Uh, on favor?
Aye.
Aye. And we'll call to order our regular portion. The first item on the agenda is approval of minutes, which we have none. We have ordinance introduction on ordinance twenty twenty-four zero one two. Need a motion to introduce that ordinance, please?
Motion to introduce ordinance uh, as described.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Commissioner Crevel?
Yes.
Commissioner Mento?
Yes.
Mayor Langraff.
Yes. We also need an order, motion to introduce ordinance twenty twenty-four dash zero one three, which is for various twenty twenty-four general capital improvements.
Motion to introduce ordinance as described.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Commissioner Crevel?
Yes.
Commissioner Mento?
Yes.
Mayor Langraff.
Yes. We'll need a motion to open public hearing on ordinance twenty twenty-four dash zero zero nine, which is, uh, amending and updating the water usage rates.
Motion to open public hearing on ordinance zero zero nine.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Commissioner Crevel?
Yes.
Commissioner Mento?
Yes.
Mayor Langraff.
Yes. Hey, this is a public hearing on ordinance twenty twenty-four dash zero zero nine. If we have any comments or questions, please step forward and state your name. Jim, anybody on Zoom?
Anybody wish to comment on this ordinance?
I can hear. Tell me to text him.
No.
Okay, seeing none, we'll close the public portion, and we'll ask for a motion to adopt ordinance twenty twenty-four dash zero zero nine.
Motion to adopt ordinance twenty twenty-four dash zero zero nine.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Commissioner Crevel?
Yes.
Commissioner Mento?
Yes.
Mayor Langraff.
Yes. Need a motion to open public hearing on ordinance twenty twenty-four dash zero one zero sewer usage rate increase.
Motion to open public hearing on ordinance twenty twenty-four dash zero one zero.
Second.
Uh, all in favor?
Aye.
Jim, can you see if anybody's on Zoom wants to have any comments?
Anybody on Zoom wish to comment on this ordinance?
Seeing none, anybody in the audience?
No.
Seeing none, need a motion to close the public hearing.
Motion to close the public hearing.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Need a motion to adopt ordinance twenty twenty-four dash zero one zero?
Motion to adopt ordinance twenty twenty-four dash zero one zero.
Second.
All, uh, roll call, please.
Commissioner Crevel?
Yes.
Commissioner Mento?
Yes.
Mayor Langraff.
Yes. Need a motion to open public hearing on ordinance twenty twenty-four dash zero one one, which is the, uh, school HVAC system bond ordinance.
Motion to open public hearing on ordinance twenty twenty-four dash zero zero, dash zero one one.
Second.
Uh, on favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, Jim, anybody on Zoom wants to have a comment on the bond ordinance for the school?
Anybody on Zoom wish to comment on this ordinance?
Seeing no comment, we'll close the public portion. Uh, need a motion to close the public portion.
Motion to close public portion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Need a motion to adopt ordinance twenty twenty-four dash zero one one.
Motion to adopt ordinance twenty twenty-four dash zero one one.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Commissioner Crevel?
Yes.
Commissioner Mento?
Yes.
Mayor Langraff?
Yes. Need a motion to adopt resolutions by consent, resolutions one twenty-three to one thirty-six.
Motion to adopt ordinances by consent as described.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Commissioner Crevel?
Yes.
Commissioner Mento?
Yes.
Mayor Langraff.
Yes. Q's on the one ACUA.
Sorry, one thirty-four, I have to recuse on, uh.
One thirty-four.
Yep. Thank you.
Okay, um, bills and payroll, Cindy, you have those for us?
Yes. Payroll for March thirty-first, twenty twenty-four to April thirteenth, twenty twenty-four is six hundred and ninety-two thousand, six hundred and sixty-five and seventeen cents, and the bills are one million, nine hundred and seventeen thousand, nine hundred and seventy-seven and twenty-eight cents.
Okay, motion through bills and payroll as stated.
Motion to approve bills and payroll.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Commissioner Crevel?
Yes.
Commissioner Mento?
Yes.
Mayor Langraff.
Yes. Announcements and safety report are listed on our agenda. Uh, Commissioner comments, uh, Maria, do you have anything?
I learned today, we got eight million in rateables already.
Wow. Alright, alright.
And, uh, you know, they're not very popular, but taxes are due May one. And just, the grace period takes you to May ten.
Okay.
So eight million and, and.
New rateable, yeah, three months. That's good.
Right in track with.
Yeah, yeah.
You got anything?
Uh, we, we hit the things that I mentioned, the stage, the parking, uh, enforcement at peace, and, uh, Park Mobile.
Okay. Um, one thing, and nobody's ever seen it, but I got to participate in something last week that was fantastic.
Yeah.
The live burn with our Ventor Fire Department was cool. I think our city administrator needs to do that next, along with Maria.
I've never.
Pay for life insurance policy?
You do feel like you're playing a video game with one life.
Yeah. They give you the thermal camera. And as you walk around with that thing, you can see how hot everything is. It, it's, and you can't see your hand in front of your face. It was, it was that cool.
Oh yeah, that sounds great.
It was fun. I, I really enjoyed it.
They set up hay burns in a corner, so you can see, and, and one of the things that they teach you is to is to, is to look.
All around the outside.
Uh, and to do it in a clockwise manner, so you don't miss anything. So you're always going into a room and going clockwise, and they have dummies staged.
Counterclockwise?
Yeah, and then they, they find dummies, and some of them find the dummies, and some of them don't, you know, so.
Yes, it, it was pretty neat. They, they would not let me go on the second floor. They, we'd keep us to the first floor.
Yeah, and then the water starts flowing in.
Yep. Thousand and twenty-five degrees. Yep. It was pretty cool. Fish and pier is open, so the kiosk is manned. Um, weekends, that'll start being manned as it gets more busy to later in evening.
We, we don't say manned anymore, staffed, please.
Thank you, thank you. Um, I got to be on, uh, AC Mike's radio show this week, and I did mention that our, our beach badges are now available on an app. Yeah. You can purchase them on an app, just have it on your phone, you don't have to carry a badge. I'm old school, I like to carry, I, I need my badge. You might have number one badge.
And your office is taking credit cards in, so.
Yep, all our, all our, uh, construction and all the offices in City Hall are taking credit payments, so that's good. Um, some events that are coming up, we have our shred event this weekend on Saturday from ten to twelve. It's also a textile event, so if you have blankets, sheets, bedding, anything like that, you wanna recycle that don't go into a landfill, please bring them to Newport Avenue from ten to four P M. Go early, it gets crowded. Um, on the twenty-fourth, I mean, I skipped one. On the nineteenth, we have Chef's Night Out, four to eight P M. And then on, that's a great event, it's a great time, great community event. Uh, Shelley DeRosa does a fantastic job with the Ventor.
She's already sold three hundred tickets.
Wow, wow.
She's only gonna sell four hundred, right?
Yeah, so get your tickets if you wanna go.
There's only a hundred tickets left.
Um, farmer's market starts on the twenty-fourth, Friday Memorial Day weekend, from eight-thirty to noon. Don't go early, they get mad. Um, five twenty-five is our first concert at Ski Beach. Um, that starts at 5:00 P.M., band starts at 6:00, but the food trucks are open at 5:00. And then on the 26th, and the reason why we moved the concert to Ski Beach, was we have set up on Saturday for our Kenny Whale Run on the 26th, which I think is a really good compromise. I think you worked on that. I think that's a, that's a great idea with, uh, special event staff to move those, to kind of separate them.
Yeah.
It was, because people come in to register, and there's an event going on, and it's confusing. So I think that's a really good idea.
Hopefully this, then layout will help as well, going forward.
Um, that's it for events, I believe. One last thing, and I talked about it today, um, with, with a, a resident, the library clock, we are gonna try to, to regit, it's gonna have to be totally new. Um, that's gonna be about a $13,000 cost. Uh, one resident was looking for ways to donate money on his, on his wife's behalf. She passed away. Um, maybe look for donations on, on that. Maybe not for all of it, but certainly for some of it. I'm gonna put together a post in our newsletter and start putting that out there for those who wanna donate to that. Um, so they might be the first to do something like that, so.
Great.
They would have a plaque there for that. So that, that's all I have.
I did have one thing. Um, the Parklet, so I went to Public Works, worked with a couple of your mechanics. We put together the planners and, and went through the instructions on how to assemble it. And it looks like one day next week, before the end of the week, we're gonna install it, and at 7311 on the corner of that, um, street. And I'd like to get, um, what, yeah, I'd like to, like to get, um, we can talk about this later, but I'd like to get some, um, uh, a local company, like Rain Flowers, to do, uh, uh, to do the planners the first time from us, and it would be using, uh, Green Team-approved flowers, things like.
Next.
It'll be for.
We should, when we put that in, we should do an event to be there, to, to ribbon-cut it if you want, or something like that.
Yeah, I might even put like, uh, a logo on it, like a Ventor City logo on it.
Perfect.
Right?
I like it. Good. Um, anything else? Tom?